And we're gonna call to order to the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, D C, C E D C Regular Board Meeting, uh, for Monday, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we do not have a form, so we won't be voting, we are gonna go ahead and get the meeting started.
We have a form, we have a form.
Oh, we did, oh, okay. Yes, yes.
You didn't count yourself.
You know what?
You didn't think I counted myself.
Hi, how are you, Mr. Carter?
Uh, first, if you would mind, uh, uh, after the invocation, you have to, after we can stand for the pledge, and we don't need to have the flags on. Monitor.
You want to put the flag on the monitor?
Technical problems.
Technology can be great until it doesn't work.
Same for the electric company, it's great till it doesn't work.
That is very true.
That's fire.
Very true. That is very true.
Uh-oh.
That is very true. I have to shift that.
All right, here we go.
All right, you would please, I can bow my head for that to the prayer, please? Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you humbly as we know how. Lord, we come thanking you for a day that wasn't promised to us, Lord. Lord, we come thanking you for us being able to come today to do the business of the city of Duncanville as you'd have us to do, Lord. We ask you to ask to touch our hearts and our minds to do what you should have us to do that's pleasing in your sight. Lead us and guide us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, first, the United States pledge. Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and then the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, you made me sing it. All right, next if I have citizen public forum, uh, to submit, to submit a comment via email or for your comments to be read, the following information is required. Submit a comment by four P M. on Monday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Email to jeremiah.brewer@duncanvilltx.gov. Email title, public comment, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. First and last name and address. Uh, do you like me to report?
Okay, so, you know, it's my first time, so I'll be reading.
Gotcha.
Okay, if you guys look under. That's the tab, right?
Captain, that too.
Captain. Yes, here we go. All right, so we have our C O. records, you guys, I know I don't need to go through all of that with you guys today, but also, that's all I have today, it's just the C O.'s. And then we have some general updates on, uh, July fourth, you guys, uh, the city council approved, of course, uh, beer and wine to be sold in the, uh, park for July fourth, I mean, July fifth and sixth, but not July fourth.
Okay.
Do you know why we, uh, why we did that?
Well, the thought process is that July fourth is a signature event, which includes family, and so we don't want to, you know, mar that with, um, beer and alcohol. But, um, after speaking with some of the vendors, um, by calling, uh, Ms. Angela Owens, I don't think we have, it's not gonna be a huge discrepancy between what we normally have anyway. You wanna comment on that?
Um, we have about thirty-five vendors coming down, um, fifteen, which are food vendors, and are already in the process of getting their permits, that was a requirement this year, is by the twenty-first, they had to have their food permit at least started.
We're talking about alcohol, I'm sorry, the alcohol situation.
And we have one who is interested in doing alcohol, uh, M B C suites.
So they can't do it on the fourth.
But no one is complaining about us not doing it on the fourth, we're doing it on the fifth and the sixth, no one.
No, okay.
I don't drink, so.
I don't. I forgot about this stuff.
You got it, yeah, at this time?
Oh, no. Also, two hundred Westerner Street, um, that's the maiden, um, uh, project, and, um, we are currently pulling, um, reports to ensure that they have done all of their permits and everything before we continue to distribute what's been allotted to them. Um, so we're working on that, communicating with them and making sure that they're communicating with the rest of the city and getting everything they're supposed to do.
That was one of our things, we give, when you give a grant, let me make sure that you do all the permits, you approve your, you're in compliance with everything. Well, once you're being in compliance with half of it, then we give you money, you know, that's, that's a good thing.
Yes. And, and, and bringing, and you saying that makes me, reminds me, one of the things that I, I really started doing as soon as I got here was looking at the way we're doing things, right? So, one of the things that we're developing is our S O Ps for all of our, our standard operating procedures for all of our processes, and that includes how we're taking in applications, how we're analyzing those applications. So you guys might actually see fewer applications, um, here, or it takes us a little bit longer until we start, you know, being more consistent with the way we're communicating with the public and telling them what's required. Um, I've noticed just, just a few things, like, once they have submitted their, their, uh, invoices and things are not really matching up with what we said we want to give them, right? So if we're saying we're gonna pay for exterior sign, we're submitting invoices for interior signage, that doesn't match up. So we have to make sure that we're doing that, so it's one of the things that we're working on is developing those processes, so.
Charles.
Are those new processes gonna include staff providing a recommendation to us on the deals that are being brought?
Is that something you would like to see?
I would, I would very much like that.
The process does allow for us to go through, and we're having like team meetings now to make sure that we all understand what's, what's expected and what's not expected. And that brings me to another point, I was just saying earlier, I think it would be helpful for a board to have like a workshop going over the application for the hot tax, as well as for the, uh, incentive grants. I think that's be something that we could consider maybe after the, after the new, uh, budget comes out. It's just something to think about, we could talk about it later time, but.
I think at this point, y'all, y'all know what we're looking for, and so you can help kind of be that first filter on its way up. It hasn't happened in a while, but one thing that frustrates me sometimes, that's, like I said, it hasn't happened in a while, is when incomplete applications make it, and then we have to sift through it and say, okay, this one doesn't have all three bids, this one doesn't, and so, I would like to avoid that.
Just FYI, she brought that up too. She brought that up, so, so, yeah, she, she, she.
Got it.
I guess, I'm sorry. Example might be with Greg, and Greg can attest to this, being, being a former member of the Planning and Zoning Council Commission, right? They have applications, whether it's a change in zoning, specific use permit, but they also have the benefit of having a, a staff report that kind of, you know, consolidates that information, and it also includes a recommendation. And I would, I would echo what Charles said, a lot of times is, we're having to really, something as simple as what's the ask, like the application will tell us, but it's like,
What exactly are you looking for from us?
What does this represent? Yeah, so, I would, I would be in favor of that, it would be most helpful.
Okay. I think another thing to consider too, when we're doing these applications, is what's the return on investment for us, right? So, like, even the hot tax, that's something they're supposed to be rolling that back into so that they can, you know, do it again next year, not depend on us all the time, but that's, that's one of those things we can talk about.
I agree with the return on investment, but I do wanna make sure everybody remembers, this is the Duncanville Community,
Yes.
and Economic Development Corporation.
Yes.
And so, we're not here to, no offense to any councilman there in the room, we're not here to make the city money, we're here to make the city better.
Right.
And so, just wanna make sure, just wanna make sure we all remember that.
I'm not gonna look over at it.
Looking right at me though.
So, but here's my question. But, but here's my question, one of the things we do, and I wanna make sure we do, we're on the same page, is that they, when we, when we do give a grant, we're also looking at, and add it to the property tax.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I wanna make sure of that.
Yeah.
Cause somebody's gonna come in here and say, you know, I want five thousand dollars, hey, what are you doing? I'm not adding employees, I'm not adding this, I'm not adding that, but it's a grant, and I want it.
Right.
So we're not, we're not like a, well, like a, a, a non, a non-PM ATM.
Kind of like the school that you were talking about earlier, that.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I think, I just double check my shoes, I don't think I'm off my list there. I think I see everybody on my list.
Where was he?
Okay.
Item number three, briefings and presentations. A, M R B Group Economic Development Funding Presentation, Matt. Is that Matt on the computer?
It is.
Can we hear?
No. If somebody just sign language, just say, Matt, we can't hear you.
I think he can hear us. Can you put it on the screen? I'm just looking at the ceiling. He seems not, yes. So, even if you're not changing the, uh, use. I guess my shot because you're a different entity.
Who has the mic, we're starting, seven seconds.
I'm looking, but, the Pinkland's One Corporation, that's, that's the best corporation.
Can we go to the next item in the meeting, come back?
Call me.
Yeah. Just do that.
No?
Is that a good one?
Yeah, or my ear?
We gotta figure out what's real, what's this, this came on to me. East end.
I have.
Neither. Neither either.
Put a tree for us. You got it?
All right, everybody hear me now?
There we go.
There we go, yeah.
Take that.
Mr. Matt?
Yes, sir.
Store is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Hey, Joe, Mike. I'm gonna give it a shot to share my screen here.
No. What does that?
So, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to be before you all tonight. Obviously, we, uh, we've really enjoyed this project, we're looking forward to continuing to support you, uh, any way that it makes sense. We've got some recommendations on what that might look like from here, but, uh, we, we're most appreciative, uh, to the E D C board for your, uh, for your faith in us, for engaging us before, we had a lot of fun working on this. Uh, just a quick reminder about the, uh, purpose of the project, we, uh, were originally engaged by the E D C to look at, uh, the organization, the, this, the city's economic development horsepower, if you will, how, how things are structured, uh, relative to business recruitment, retention, expansion, to community development generally, uh, and to make some recommendations about how best to optimize that organization. Uh, we also laid a little bit of a foundation for some future strategic planning, uh, but, but just, a reminder that this isn't, wasn't designed to be a, a strategic plan, but, uh, an organizational assessment, uh, and a, uh, and a focus on how best to orient at the resource you got in place today. So in order to get there, we did a, a lot of work on existing conditions. We met, uh, so many great folks in Duncanville, a lot of the folks around this table, uh, folks on city council, players in the community, uh, and, uh, spent a, a good couple of days doing both formal, and I kind of joked with city council when we spoke with them. Uh, we did formal interviews, certainly, sat in the conference room and, and heard from, uh, from a lot of the stakeholders in the community, but also we had the opportunity to visit storefronts.
Storefronts, uh, in downtown, and, and, uh, out on corridors, uh, basically anywhere we went to buy a bottle of water.
Oh. We still hear you. We catch you. We still hear you. We can, can you hear us? We can hear you, we can just keep talking.
Okay. But you can hear me on the, uh, big screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, great. I'm glad I didn't let, let the ex-putus fly there when I was. Okay, are you still good?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, great. So, we also did some, uh, at, some informal interviews with businesses around the community, uh, and heard from, heard from folks from just about every corner possible. Uh, we, we took a look at some foundational documents, the policies and procedures that are in place for the E D C itself, and for, um, city organizations that funnel into economic development. Um, and then, of course, we spent a little time with, with you all, um, directly to, to kind of get a feel for what your concerns were, um, and maybe some directions that we might, might point. Uh, all of this data is contained in your, uh, in the report, which, uh, I'm, I'm sure you've seen, uh, you know, there, there's nothing here that should surprise you. This, this was really meant for, uh, to give us kind of a, a three hundred and sixty degree look at where, uh, where Duncanville was sitting. Really, in the, in the M S A, that's a, uh, just a peer group that we evaluated as a standard measure. We understand kind of the dynamics of D F W, and, um, and, you know, how, how things break there, uh, but, but it, it helps us to kind of understand and index you against, against that part of the region. Uh, as I mentioned, just a ton of interviews, these were the formal interviews, uh, that, that we engaged in. Uh, I'll, I'll be, uh, clear, these folks didn't hold anything back, they were frank, they were honest upfront. Uh, one of the major takeaways that, uh, that we had in these interviews was that there's a, there's a group of leaders in Duncanville that really cares about where this community is going. Folks are in the right seats for the right reasons, uh, in, in large part, all around the community. And, uh, that was really hard, again, to, to get the level of turnout that we had, uh, from elected officials, from folks like yourselves who are appointed, and, uh, and really from some private sector investors, um, who just wanna see this community pointed in the right direction, and so, really, big thanks to everyone on this list and everyone else that we were able to speak with. So some of the early findings that we came across, and it's funny, we sat across from you all, um, just after our first kind of round of interviews, but even then, we picked up on some themes that really held true throughout our analysis and, and into the, uh, into the organizational assessment itself. Uh, it's, it's really clear that people value Duncanville for the quality of life that you offer. Um, you know, we, we were in town, uh, more recently, I've had the opportunity to bring some additional colleagues in, uh, and, and we were, we're really heartened by, uh, the investments that the city has made, that you've made, um, in some strong quality of life assets, things like arts and culture, uh, the complex you're sitting in today. Uh, it's just really clear that, um, that you're committed to making Duncanville, uh, a great place. Uh, location wise, you just can't be beat, you got, you got access via the interstates and other major highways, uh, literally twenty-eight minutes from, uh, from D F W and, um, and everything that, that, that entails, um, all of the economic horsepower that comes out of that. Uh, relative to most communities your size that we work with, I would say very significant economic development funding, you have the resources, uh, to really move things forward, and you have in so many ways. Uh, and so, uh, that's something that I think is, that can set you apart from your peers. People recognize Duncanville as the city of champions, I love that, love it still, it's true in so many ways, and the, um, and, you know, your, your recognition as a sports-related destination carries a brand with it that you can capitalize on, you can capture the energy, uh, that, that comes with, uh, being recognized to, for your, for your sports assets in particular. It's relatively inexpensive, uh, you know, we, we looked at home values in the region, property values in the region, and relative to, uh, particularly to peers in the, in the north end, but even to some of your neighbors in the north, I should say, the north end of the metro, but even relative to some of your neighbors, still an inexpensive place to come in, make an investment, and, uh, and be able to, to be in a, a really strong position. And you have this really cool, unique downtown district that, that we just love, um, and that, that sets you up for this, you know, pride of place or power of place, uh, that comes along with that. On the flip side of that, though, what we discovered is that there's not a clear, long-term strategy, and, and we know, uh, that the city's recently, it, uh, invested or is preparing to invest, the community's preparing to invest in a comprehensive plan, that's really critical. Um, you all, with the resources that you have, when you get those resources pointed in a unified direction, uh, these, these, the momentum starts to build, and these successes start to build upon one another. And so, uh, you know, a clear, long-term strategy is critical, but absent that, when we talk to stakeholders, there was a question, if they feel like the city's pulling this direction on some things and that direction on others, um, that some parts of the city, and now we're saying the city proper, some parts of the city are pulling in one direction while others are pulling in others, and, and so that creates this, what we'll call a, a strong, not open-for-business reputation. Uh, particularly in some of those informal interviews, we stopped into some really cute restaurants and, and neat spots around town and asked the question, hey, when did you open? Most of the places we frequented were open relatively recently. Well, how was the engage, how was the development process? How was the engagement with the city to get your business up and running? And the general consensus, and the overwhelming consensus of that was not a pleasant experience, that there were lots of challenges with the development process in particular, development review process in particular. Uh, we say land avail, you know, available for development is in short supply, Doug and I always have a smile on our face when we say this. Uh, under the current zoning, under the current development regulations, your land appears to be constrained. We think there's lots of opportunities on the, on the other side of a code rewrite, on the other side of updates and modernization of your development codes. But for today, the way development has occurred over time has soaked up a lot of land that's not being super productively used. Uh, and then, you know, I just talked about, you know, some of these gorgeous arts and culture destinations, that beautiful campus you're sitting on, um, we, we say lack of positive appearance in key locations, and you can probably close your eyes right now and think of three or four things in close proximity to that campus, along key corridors into the community where you'd be scratching your head, and, and maybe you not, might not even make it to that lush campus, cause you might get the wrong impression of Duncanville as you come into town. So, a, a big set of, of really incredible and potentially productive assets, and some serious challenges, but challenges that thankfully, in a lot of ways, are wholly within your control, right? Um, it's clearly within the community's control to, to develop a long-term strategy, it's clearly within the city administration's control to reorient the way, and I know you've already made some strides in this even since we've been there, but to reorient the way development review takes place, um, if you, if you recalibrate your codes and modernize them, it's gonna open up some land for development that you might not have thought about before. And the, and the, uh, appearance issues are again, just very much within your control. It doesn't feel like that all the time, and, and it's, sometimes it feels like we're talking out of both sides of our mouth, where we say, hey, you gotta be more business friendly, and hey, you gotta be more aggressive in code enforcement on some of these tough properties. But I promise you, both of them can coexist and should coexist, so we can talk about that in, uh, in our recommendations. Um, so first things first, you gotta have a plan, all right? But what we say about, uh, about great communities is that great communities don't happen by accident. They happen with clear intentionality and hard work behind a clear intention. And so, as you get started on your comprehensive plan, you know, we've already recommended this, um, to, uh, to Doug and to the city council, but, but as you get started with your comprehensive plan, it just makes perfect sense to have a parallel economic development strategy that then you can invest in. Uh, and when, when you've got that clear vision, well, the first thing we do in, in strategy or, and certainly in comprehensive planning is, we, we establish the, a picture of the ideal Duncanville, fifteen years from today, twenty years from today. What does that look like? And then we cascade, um, specific strategies to move us from where we are today to that clear picture. And this is perfect timing with the comprehensive plan, and aligning an economic development strategy in parallel to that will, will pay dividends. Once you have that, that, those clear strategies, now you can align your funding to that, right? With the significant resources we just talked about, a couple million dollars a year coming in the door to be reinvested back out the door to making Duncanville a great community. Um, if you point that at a specific set of strategies, particularly on the scale that, uh, that your resources are at, are at, you're gonna see, you're gonna see substantial change pretty quickly, and we're confident about that. And then once you have this vision and once you have these strategies, communicating that to the outside world, to the marketplace, it attracts developers who share your values. It is, it attracts investors who want Duncanville to look the way you want it to look. Um, so you don't have a hard time, you know, slugging it out with folks who just are trying to do the cheapest thing, or just trying to squeeze in under the radar. Um, you have folks who are partners in your, in your strategies. Uh, we've got some work to do on those policies and procedures, and I know there's already work underway, and I was in town a, a week or two ago, and saw some of the early results of that, even just physical, space-wise. Um, we have to, we have to communicate to the business community that we're open for development. Um, and to get there, we have to have our codes modernized, we have to have our processes oriented toward getting these businesses open and up and running. Uh, we talked about this in terms of the no-wrong-door approach, and the, the general idea is, if you've ever had a customer service experience with a really bureaucratic organization, whether public or private, a really big, clumsy organization, my, my favorite example from very recently was my flight was running late, and I was worried that they weren't gonna hold my car for me. And I called the, I called the car company, and it said, press one to change your, to change your reservation by, by website, we can give you in, in, information on how to do that. Press two if you'd like to talk to a live representative, and I pressed two, and it rang five times and then hung up on me. And so I called back, and I pressed zero, and I pressed every number, they were, they were really oriented to not want to talk to me, right? And so, in the, in the city organization today, in the development, uh, on the development side, not today, but historically in, in years past, the, the customers, the investors, right, the people who came to Duncanville to start a business, to invest in development in the community, did not get the sense that anyone was there to help them. They got the sense that everyone was there to kind of make sure that the rules got followed no matter what. And so, you go to the wrong door, and eh, um, it's not, it's not my office, um, you come at the wrong time of day, and eh, this person's not gonna be back till Tuesday or Wednesday. Um, and these things, it starts to spiral on each other. My favorite part of Duncanville City Hall are those ladies who sit at the front desk, um, they have the answers, they know who to talk to, they know how to get ahold of people, that's a, that's a monster asset there. They're always smiling, they're always friendly, they're always trying to connect you in the right place, that's the kind of attitude that has to pervade, particularly in planning and zoning and permitting. We're encouraging the, um, the city to think about separating planning and economic development, we say offices here, we just mean organizations. The idea of a one-stop shop is actually really smart, so that we're not wandering all over the city or even all over City Hall, looking for the right person to talk to. The right person is in the same suite, what we're talking about is creating an advocate on the economic development side, whose job it is to get this person through the development review process, right? Whose job it is to get this person through the development review process, right? So when you have one person that's wholly responsible for planning and economic development, there can be role confusion there. And there can be a a bit of a challenge with um with getting a a particular business across the across the finish line. Um consolidating various committees, we were uh uh at the city council meeting where we presented. And and uh some prior engagements in Duncanville, we've heard, you know, everywhere it's getting harder and harder and harder to find people like yourselves. Who are willing to come in a couple of times a month, do the due diligence in between meetings, do our research, get ourselves up to speed. On the projects that are out there and then come and sit and listen to the the cases that are being made to support uh business. Uh if we've got four or five of those committees, even if they're really well-aligned, it gets harder to staff them. It gets hard to a achieve a quorum. Now they're not meeting on the schedules that they were intended to meet on and things just just start to fall apart. So inside of the economic development strategy, uh there would be some more specific recommendations. But you can think of some of these off the top of your head, where we've got three or four committees who are all looking to do the same thing. Which is make make Duncanville a great place to do business, a great place to live. Um where we can, where it makes sense, wondering if we can consolidate some of those committees. Um so that we can we can rely on the the group of folks who've committed to this. And the public-private partnerships, the uh the the city and you all have been evaluating these uh re- more recently. Um as you get into some of these more complex land development deals, uh project development deals. You're gonna want some true private sector partners who are willing to share risk with you. And who are willing to um share your vision, so that we're all we're all working in the same direction. And a public-private partnership is so much more than just a vendor, right? We pay someone to do a job, they do the job and and then that's done. Uh a public-private partnership is shared risk, shared reward, and shared expertise and vision. So um we can we can talk more deeply about that as we get into economic development strategy as well. We know you're already down the road on this and we're excited about that. Uh but but historically, uh there's been a little bit of a disconnect between uh some of the city-held properties. And some of the D C D C work. Uh let's make it a much more streamlined process. When the city's got parcels that can be activated, um and and that should be uh uh developed and are ready to be developed now. Let's get those into an RFP and out on the street. Uh and and be prepared to look at full public-private partnerships. Um when when there are properties that are sitting out there in maybe not the wrong hands, but but in hands that aren't prepared to move forward or aren't prepared to to do things the way we like to see them done, these strategic parcels. Um identify opportunities to acquire those strategic parcels. Do the pre-development work, which is to say, make sure the zoning is set up in the right way. Make sure that we're vetting development concepts that we're excited about, so that we can attract developers. Make sure that infrastructure is in place, so that when we're ready to go to RFP, those those projects tend to roll forward. And then this community appearance strategy, I think it's it's probably the one of the most. I I hate to say simple, because nothing that you ever do is simple, particularly in local government. There's lots of players, lots of stakeholders, uh lots of rules and laws, laws that are even beyond your control. Um but to the degree that we can affect change, community appearance strategy is is a way where you. A- as as the city have some of the most direct uh the most di- direct opportunity to affect. Um and you gotta focus it. I I joked with the coun- the council the other night. There's no sense in taking your code enforcement assets and sprinkling them equally all the way across the city. We're gonna pick those areas that are most likely to make an impression on folks who are just coming to our community. So thinking about the ways people get into Duncanville, thinking about what those corridors and those entrances look like today. And and cleaning them up, uh doing doing everything we can to make sure that when people get off the interstate, when people are coming down Main Street. It's a pop, they see it, they get excited about it, they're drawn further into downtown. So those are our recommendations. They're obviously a little bit more deeply explored in the um in the report itself. Happy to answer any questions and we're excited to to move on to the next steps.
Any questions, comments, observations from the board? Yes, sir.
What what are the next steps? I don't know if this is a question for Matt or if it's a question for manager bench. What are the next steps?
Can Matt, can you hear us?
Yes, I was gonna say, I was at I'm at a disadvantage because I can't see Doug, because I don't wanna step on his toes. This is where he might give me the hook or the the cut-up sign if I start to go off track. So I'm just he's just gonna have to trust me to say what I feel like I should say. I think from from my perspective, the next steps are, you've got a couple of these uh a couple of these key properties that are sitting out there. That you're already in control of. Think about uh the the Toyota property, in particular the funeral home property, a couple of these that you've been working on, you've been under you've you've got a good understanding of. Uh we think you activate those right now, uh get RFPs. Uh do your pre-development assessment, make sure everything's square and good to go. And then put some RFPs together to to just check developer interest. And if you see a project that that aligns with what you're looking for, um then you can go ahead and get that rolling. Uh the comprehensive plan is is job one in terms of getting your policy orientation in order. And so we're strongly recommending and and uh and we know the city's making moves to to get the comprehensive plan process rolling forward. And in parallel with that, a good economic development strategy. Uh those are two things that you can start right now that are gonna that are gonna kick momentum forward, I think.
And let me just say that um the two properties that he's speaking with, they that we've already started that process. So the city has already rented that property to the D C D C and we're in the process of getting all the background and and all the the paperwork surveys and appraisals. And I think phase one's already completed with the the funeral home. And so we are already starting on that. Yeah.
Does Matt, does Matt company, I know I I understand what he's saying regards to kind of stuff we usually, we have to really uh select development opportunities. Does his services also include ideas of what can go in those properties?
I think that's gonna be developed, some of that's gonna come about, or most of that will come about through the comprehensive plan, once that's developed. Yeah, but they can definitely and probably will definitely make recommendations, I'm sure.
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan is, think of it as the blueprint for the city, right? And so that's why it's so important to get the community feedback and engagement from the entire city. And and been talking to the council, been talking to a lot of the different groups about it, um about the need for that. And then that really tells what the future, that tells us what Duncanville twenty thirty is gonna look like, probably twenty forty and twenty fifty. Um and then the economic development strategies to, you know, really be incorporated in that. So uh we've started down the process. Uh we have a a city council committee that has evaluated. Uh I think we had eight different proposals to our RFP. Um I believe they have selected a firm, it's my understanding, the committee has selected a firm that they're gonna be recommending to the full council. Um that may or may not have some knowledge, um that could also wrap into the economic development strategy, so. Don't be surprised if I come back asking you to pay for that too, by the way.
What else would we do?
Any other questions, comments, or observations?
I just I just wanna say thank you to Matt. I think y'all did a wonderful job on this personally, and I really appreciated the time and effort you put into it. I enjoyed my interviews, so if everybody else's went the same way that mine did, uh then I think I think you got a lot of good, a lot of good feedback.
Yeah, Matt, you mean, when I when I did my interview, you was able to have a conversation. And your some of your questions may be even thinking about something I hadn't even thought about. So it was it was it was very in-depth, so I appreciate that very much.
And I enjoyed mine as well, you can't see me, but it's LoLisha back here. I enjoyed my interview as a business owner first, so thank you. Unique perspective.
Thank you, Matt, thank you very much.
See you, Matt.
Thanks for being here, Matt, thank you.
Appreciate the time, enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Oh, give it our best shot.
Uh second briefing, uh I don't know, the D C D C hot and hot fund budgeting briefing. Jennifer Otey, Budget Administration. Is Jennifer, how are you?
Hi, thank you. And that's a perfect segue, what's your gonna spend your money on? I'm gonna talk about that, so. While we get set up, so yes, my name is Jennifer Ody and I'm the Budget Administration. It's okay, I wished it was Otey, like, you know, a little rascal, this one. Like with a D, but not spelled that way, so. Um anyway, I've actually been with the city for twenty years, you know, I'm actually a product of Duncanville, I grew up here in high school here, so. No, I've known Duncanville well, as well, definitely seen it through a lot of changes, so it's fun.
And well, I gotta, I should say, Jennifer has been a godsend for myself, just coming in and understanding the budget and helping to work. And she has been working with us a lot, so thank you, Jennifer.
All right, so in your packet, you should have gotten a copy of what I put together. So basically, I'm gonna be reviewing uh that. So we're gonna start with economic development first. So as you know, that the resources that we get for economic development comes from sales tax. At this point in time, our forecast going into this next budget year, we're gonna keep it flat. As you have seen the updates to what we've actually received to date, um we've been trending under what we've actually received in um calendar year of twenty twenty-three. So for the conservative approach for now, we are kind of leaving that flat. But what you see here is a rolling twelve-month average there. Um additionally, um this shows you what uh the change from the prior months or prior years at the same time. Um has been and what the changes have been. Our largest uh industry segment here in Duncanville is the retail trade. And so um in the last six or so months, you know, they have been trending downward. Um so again, that is why we chose it to budget flat at this point in time. If anything changes, of course, that's something that we will update. Uh kind of getting to the expenditure highlights, so there are a few divisions within economic developments. I'm starting with more administration, that covers your four full-time employees and a part-time intern. Um it covers, you know, sponsorships and marketing campaigns or training. Um it it's gonna cover comprehensive plan update, field house, strategic plan, as we've been talking about.
It's almost like this was coordinated, there's the planner in the room, so.
Um another division, as you know, is beautification. We do spend funds for um beautifying our major corridors and um beautification efforts, such as all the seasonal plannings and things that you see. Also keep Duncanville beautiful activities. This does uh employ one full-time employee as well as seasonals that help with the change outs of the beds and things. Um that is actually uh Tyler A G in our Parks Department um at Spears, I mean, that that program. And then lastly, we have more the development incentives and, you know, just uh general support that economic development gives. So at this point in time, we have two-point-three million budgeted for, this would be for development, redevelopment incentives, all your demolitions, major retail center revitalizations. Another, you know, facade signage, landscaping, paving, all those different uh incentives that you offer, as well as the continued sport uh Star Transit. Um the final payment for the field house is due in February twenty twenty-five, so that will free up some funds. Um and then also, one-point-four million is uh planned for a field house to replace the HVAC system and their roof. So that is a one-time cost for this. In your packet, this is very small, I realize, but yes, sir, any questions?
Um I wanted to go back to a couple of things on the development incentives. For Star Transit, I thought that D C D C was only covering the startup.
Startup, the first year.
Okay. I'm, to be honest, personally, I'm not aware of what the arrangement is, but if that is something that the understood, because it's about sixty thousand, that that startup costs.
I mean, I'm not saying it won't cover, I just I don't I just recall it being.
That was my understanding.
I remember it being like four different presentations before we finally even got to that. Not because of the current board makeup, just I'm like.
We'll go back and look at those agreements and if you need to take it up, we'll take it up.
And then the field house debt. As as we keep reconciling the city's budget, are we gonna get a presentation on the field house's financial performance? I know that the arrangement for D C D C to pay for the debt of the field house is contingent on, or is. The five-hundred-and-thirty-seven less any profit field house max. I'm under no illusion that they made any profit, but still, I think as a as a board, we should we should get to see the financial performance of the field house.
So we've made a couple of changes internally with organization on the field house, just within the last month. So prior, the field house fell as a subcategory under Parks and Rec. We moved them up, uh we're actually, we were having conversations internally about even putting it under economic development.
That's a great idea.
But instead, what where we landed was actually treating it as its own department. Because there's parts of it that are Parks and Rec, there's parts of it that is economic development. There's a strong piece that's economic development, especially if we're really having it live up to its potential of bringing people to the community, right? The tourism, people stay in here, people go into our restaurants and everything else. Um so with that, for instance, even today's Monday, so uh for instance, the general manager even provides a report to us now every single Monday. Um in our executive team meetings on where they're at financially, how much they brought in. They brought in, uh they've had two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand visitors so far this year. Uh so now we're starting to get some of that data. I'll be able to share that with you guys and we'll definitely wanna have them come in. He's gonna be here tonight, but I will definitely have them come in and do a presentation to you. Um you know, I think they're on track actually to make a very small profit, very, very small profit. But I think where the real opportunity here, and we're also gonna talk about the strategic plan, right? Is to actually do a strategic plan really for specifically the field house, from where we could see that, what the community wants. And then to come up with some sort of a hybrid situation where our staff continues to run it on day-to-day operations. But then we bring in some help to attract big events, big tournaments, and not necessarily just sports either. And make sure that it's in use year-round and stuff. So we can definitely answer, long answer is yes, so we'll update that all for you.
So, okay, go ahead.
Are y'all setting it up, this is for maybe for you, is it being set up as its own department? Or is it being set up as an enterprise fund, so that it can capture its own revenue?
It is set up as, is our, it's always been set up as an enterprise fund.
So what are we standing in regards to replacing the HVAC system at the, and then we talked about that at the last.
Right, so you guys approved the engineering for us, so we're doing the engineering right now. And then we'll get a better idea once that engineering work has been done uh for that, in terms of the cost. I think the range they gave us was somewhere between eight-hundred thousand and one-point-two million, but we don't know exactly.
Unfortunately, I have a question on the split number, the five-thirty-seven, nine-fifty. Um in twenty twenty-four, oh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three. The field house apparently made a profit. And I'm gonna keep bringing this up as long as I'm on this floor, that I would like to see the accounting of how that profit was made. And the payment that we made to the to the field house was not reconciled, in my opinion. That we overpaid them. And I would like to really have transparency, if it is correct that we overpaid them. Or let me rephrase that, that we didn't overpay them, we paid them the correct amount. But it appears that we overpaid them and that we're all clear for our records with the payment was made. Because it was in the neighborhood of two-hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and and to expand on that, we had talked about, I mean, it's at the time, we weren't getting clear reports on. Right, and I think we had made the, we had just made the determination as a board as a board at the time to just let it go. With the understanding it was going to be reinvested back into the field house.
The field house. Let us get through the audit. We're doing the twenty-three audit right now, and then we'll have final numbers for you when we come back.
As this number comes to us, if it is the correct number, this five-thirty-seven or whatever it should be, then we need to know that as a board, I think. And I really, uh it's gonna be, I'm a dog on a bone with that. And until we get through this, and I am so excited to see February twenty twenty-five coming. Get this paid for.
I think that's, I think that's such a good question. I think um with the field house doing, what we're doing now with the field house, um just like just getting those reports from Mr. uh from Craig will be helpful. More communication, more transparency is important.
I just wanna make sure we're all good on that, because I know there's folks in the community that have been asking about that. And I think that's a question that we all have to be real clear about, that there's some cloudiness there, and I would like that resolved.
Keep in mind, we just finished the twenty twenty-two audit, so we do have those. I mean, we can certainly provide twenty. Keep in mind, we just finished the twenty twenty-two audit, so we do have those, I mean, we can certainly provide twenty-two, but then next, we're doing the twenty-three audit. And so, probably another sixty days, hopefully ninety at the most, and we'll have that final number, then we'll go back through the details with you.
And when we get to the next stage on the H V A C, it is, it is my preference at the D C D C, if we pay for it. So, I'm not gonna guess where the rest of my board members are, but, uh, we should just pay for it straight up, I don't wanna see any debt.
Could then get the payments on it, I don't.
Understood. So Jennifer's putting in the budget placeholder for the whole thing, hopefully, we won't need the whole thing, but she's putting the placeholders in the budget right now for that.
And just to clarify that five thirty-seven, that is directly from a debt schedule.
Right.
So that's the number we plug in typically.
So that's, that's the number it's supposed to be, that it actually really is.
Yeah.
Full, full principal. All right, so this is very small, I apologize, but it is in your, um, package, I just kind of wanted to show you what the, the, the full, um, the full thing looks like, you know, as, as we're spending all of this, and you know, you do have quite, uh, a few resources, but kind of at the pace that we're going, um, we are drawing down on, um, the fund balance that we do have in economic development, um, at this point in time. So I just wanna make sure that's something that is, you know, you're keeping an eye on as you're approving things.
What is the position that's being added for twenty-four, twenty-five? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, that's my bad. I was looking at the hot tax.
So, just real quick, this number here, so, so she's showing you fund balance, and she's, she's showing you what the projected ending fund balance is, a three-point-one, right? But keep in mind, we've been talking about, like, for instance, the Toyota property and that, so I mean, your number is gonna go back up, that's not really gonna go that long, so.
But this includes H V A C, debt payment.
Includes everything. Yeah, and the debt payment.
All of the events that are being moved from the city budget.
Yeah, yes. All right, going into hotel motel really quick, um, so obviously, hotel motel comes from, um, the hotel motel occupancy tax that we receive. This just kind of shows you the, um, what we've received over the last few years and how, um, it's gone up, obviously, twenty twenty. Um, it took a deep dive, but it has gone up since then, so the projection is nine-hundred-twenty-three thousand, there has been some, uh, it's been brought up in the, in the board, but just, you know, an idea of, you know, possibly increasing that rate, because it currently is at seven percent, um, and toying with the idea of increasing it to nine percent, uh, generate approximately another two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand or so more to this fund. Um, just expenditure highlights, so again, you have a conventions and visitors bureau section, really is one full-time employee, that's the event planner, as well as what you pay out for, uh, grants, the chamber, um, art grants, Donegal Community Theater, those kind of things. Um, and then also special events, and I wanna put this together, we're going back and forth about how this is gonna be accounted for. So actually, the special events are going to be under economic development, not hotel motel, but, um, you will apply for a grant like other, um, other organizations to cover, if it's eligible to cover, like, July fourth and, um, Christmas festivals, those kind of multi-day events that we're targeting. Um, so those planning details are still being continued.
So essentially, it's a transfer, it's a transfer from the hot funds back over to your budget.
Yes. Um, so again, another, uh, table's giving you the whole picture here, so, um, we've been pretty stable from a fund balance standpoint at this point, so.
Now, ask my question, what is the new position that's in, in here? Or is it an existing position being moved in, I'm specifically looking down at salary.
Oh, my goodness, okay, I'm so sorry, so, so this was, uh, my copies from last year and updated the information, but I guess I apparently missed that bullet point down. The, the, the planner was added previously, but there's not a new position going in.
It's the special events position, right?
Yes, it was a special event, so I'm sorry, I missed that I had that note down. Do you have any other questions for me about the budget?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have a question on the hot tax.
Sure.
On the hot tax. Uh, what's traditionally, how much of this has been expended in a year? The reason I ask, if we're talking about potentially going from seven percent to nine percent, if we don't, we're not spending it already, then what are we gonna spend the additional on if we're not already?
It's funny, I'm glad you asked.
I'm so excited. You wanna take this, well, go for it.
Well, so, and I copied a bunch of you, actually, I think I co- copied the whole entire board on an email that I was having with, back and forth with the Arts Commission, right? So, there is an opportunity for us to fund events, arts, cultural type stuff, as well as to increase our special events. Um, I actually was going through, we had a conversation, Jennifer and I had a conversation this morning about hot tax, and then I ended up having a couple of follow-up conversations reading in-depth chapter three fifty-one, but I, um, I made a connection this afternoon, I think I'm gonna have somebody from the, uh, Hotel, uh, Association, Motel, Hotel Association, come in and really kind of do a presentation for anybody that wants to hear it, in terms of the allowable uses of hot funds. But really, uh, in terms of, it's all about promoting, it has to be a multi-day event.
Community, community.
The gist of it is getting people to come here, stay in our restaurants, stay in our hotels, and that kind of stuff. So, you know, really, the, the opportunity is to maybe even expand the events, you know, we've added a new event this year. Do we have a name yet for
No.
September sixteenth, whatever it is, um, but around the Hispanic, right, so we've added a new, uh, signature event. Um, that's the other thing too, just we haven't mentioned here tonight, but I think you, you guys may know this. Um, we've really tried to break away and separate our community events from our signature events, community events being like the stuff at the rec center or the senior center, the one-day, the afternoon type things versus the signature event, those are all paid for by the general fund, Parks and Rec, versus the signature events, which are designed to give people to come to Duncanville.
And they're multiple day events, get people, you know, heads and beds and things of that nature.
Yeah.
So.
So is the, the Hotel Association, do they support that increase?
Well, go ahead.
Well, yes, the, the whole, I've talked to a couple of the hotels here, and, and they have supported the increase. Um, I have a couple more meetings next week, but everybody's supportive of the increase because they are seeing what we're doing, they understand us doing this, uh, signature events, they understand that the Arts Commission being part of it, the fieldhouse, they see what we see, you know what I mean? They see that, um, Duncanville has this potential for growth, and when they see that we are trying to do those things like the multiple-day events and, and work with the fieldhouse, they are more than willing to increase that, um, occupancy rate, so I've had no.
Would the one hotel tell you today, jack up to fifteen percent, whatever?
Well, yeah. The funny thing is, both, both those hotels, those two hotels told me that the rate hasn't been changed in a very long time, and I'm surprised it's taking this long. And they're like, sure, let's, let's do it, and they're like, is that, is that it? So now, I'm kind of going back and saying, well, maybe we should go up one or two, I'm just saying, but that's another conversation. Uh, but yes, everybody's on board with that, they have no problem.
I'd like to see some planned uses with it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, what, what that's gonna be used for.
Well, if you, if you would like, tomorrow night, we're gonna have a joint meeting with the City Council and the Arts Commission, we'd love to have you come, because we can talk about some uses for it.
Yeah.
You're not a programmer.
You're always wrong.
Yeah.
Where's it gonna be?
It's Senior Center, Senior Center, yeah.
Good question about position inventory, so, when in I see four full-time positions, I'm assuming that's director, assistant, coordinator.
Executive assistant.
And executive assistant, okay, then we've got the event planner for the
Hotel motel.
And we've got beautification.
Yes.
That we, that's maybe house and Parks and Rec, but.
Who's paying for it?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Does it make sense, everybody generally have funds up?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Next, item number four, consider approval of the D C D C minutes for the regular meeting held on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, under tab number four. Do you would please, if I have any questions, comments, observations? And if you don't, I intend to walk you through.
That we accept the minutes for the regular meeting, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
Do I have a second?
Go ahead and say it.
So improve the property second in regards to the approval of the minutes from the, uh, April twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-four, a regular scheduled meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Any abstain?
Abstain.
Uh, D, please let me know, uh, Vice President, uh, Charles, he wasn't here. Okay, uh, item number five, consider approval of the D C D C minutes from the special call meeting held on June third, twenty twenty-four.
I have a question about that. Yes, yes, sir. The weather, this is the night the weather was really bad, I was late, and I don't know if we know our arrival plans.
I don't know, is that, is that a policy we have?
I'm not aware of that.
No, I don't.
We probably should. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special call meeting on June third, and make sure we put in bold and underline that Board Member Silka was late, or that he did, I'm kidding, I'm kidding about the bold and.
This is the, this was the meeting for the, um, the property.
June third?
June.
No, 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 I want the property.
That was our rescheduled one, because of Memorial Day.
Because of Memorial Day.
That's what it changed, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Wait, well, you were on time for that one one.
He said he's listed.
Yeah, you were here that one, yeah.
I was here, but.
You're on there, for June third.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special call meeting on June third, no amendments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Item number property second in regards to the approval of the June, of the, uh, June third, twenty twenty-four, um, uh, meeting, meeting minutes?
This is what I'm, I'm sorry, this is what I'm playing.
The tenants is captured though.
Yeah, you're.
I know my tenants is there, but I was like.
Yeah, he said we're gonna, we're gonna, maybe we're gonna just that in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna just thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Any abstain? Any abstain? Uh, uh, Board Member Savage wasn't here for that meeting, so she abstained aggressively. All right, um, receive and discuss the following reports, is another one? Yes. D C E D C monthly budget report for April and May of twenty twenty-four.
Do you want them all now, or just one by one? I'd rather go ahead and get all of them now.
Item B, city sales and use tax comparison summary for April and May twenty twenty-four. C, Duncanville Fieldhouse Sports Facility Financial Standards Reports for April and May twenty twenty-four. D, Main Station Duncanville Limited, Limited, uh, Monthly Financials from April and May twenty twenty-four.
And let me just insert on A, that is actually only for April, May is still being calculated and received, those, that nature, so this is just for April of twenty twenty-four, as of April twenty twenty-four.
Ma'am, is this the director?
Well, um, Ms. Otey did such a great job a few years ago, but, uh, if you guys could look on page, uh, one of seven, you can see that, um, yeah, first page, I'm sorry.
Tab six.
Tab six, the second page. Yes. Um, the sales tax collections are currently at negative zero-point-five-nine percent over the previous year's collections for the same time period. That's just something to note, um, it's, the year's not over. But I think, um, I just highlighted a few things that got my attention, um, the revenues as of April thirtieth, and then the expenses on page two of seven, which kind of just talked a little bit about what we were talking about earlier, as far as making sure some of the things that we're doing are more focused and, and, uh, just being, you know, just being aware of our budget.
That's one of the things that I really appreciate, from this day, Kenny, she looked at all those things, and she wanted to know about to being, staying on budget and stuff like that, because in the last few months, we, we didn't have those reports. So she, she got some.
I do what I do. Uh, the fieldhouse fund, you guys were, you know, wanting some information, so this is a little general, it's kind of general, but I can definitely see, um, that you can see for, uh, twenty twenty-four and expenses versus revenues.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's unusual.
Then we got your hot tax fund, you've got your economic development, again, this is more of a line code. Special revenue funds, revenue and expenses.
Don't we leave the special revenue? I don't know, Dan.
Well, if you, um, it's insurance, grants, donations, you've got your tip on there. And I guess you guys can see down there, all, all of us, these are unaudited ballots, so this is until the, the next audit, maybe this is just, um, I do like to look at how we compare with other cities, as far as our state tax and things that's in there. And then the last part is from the, uh, main station income statement for the month and for the
Year to month.
Um, uh, year to, yeah, year to month, for expenses as well as revenue.
Any questions, comments, observations?
Isn't that something we need to be discussing about that?
Yeah, if I could just make a quick comment on the, um, main station, so at the last meeting, we talked about, you guys directed us to get an appraisal done, so we know the value of that, so we're working on, I'm gonna answer for you right, yeah, on that, what we're working on that, but, um, I had a conversation with the city attorney, and he was going back through some of the documents for us. Once we get the appraisal, and you guys can do it a couple of different ways, uh, just put out an R F P. and see what people would offer for it. But, um, we do have to, the majority owner of the property gets right to first review.
They get first right, no matter what.
And then if they don't, then just put it in the open market, so.
I mean, but we don't have to entertain the offer, right? I mean, if they love us, we can still do the R F P.
Absolutely. And that's why I think it was really smart of the one, you guys just parked through the appraisal first. Because then you see what the market value.
What I was looking for.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
Do we need a motion to accept these? Do we need to do a motion to accept these?
It says receive and discuss, it's probably a good idea, just that you.
Make a, make a motion to accept the four reports listed under item number six.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Can move and property second in regards to receiving and approving the reports A, B, C, and D. Any questions, comments, or observations? Any not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Any abstain? Item number seven?
I apologize to the board, this didn't get moved, this public hearing is supposed to be, we talked about that the last meeting, you're probably gonna wanna move the public hearing up prior to.
Make a mo- motion to suspend, uh, well, we wanna do the presentation on, I'm sorry, we wanna do the presentation on the item before the public hearing.
Yeah.
So, so you do want, so that, that is right, I think.
So we're, we're getting the right one.
Oh, right. You want to do the presentations first.
Jennifer just did it for the
For the annual budget.
For the budget.
And then the fieldhouse.
Right, and then else, but then A L W.
Then the A L W, entertainment.
Yeah, okay, no, it's all in the right one, okay.
All right. Okay.
We'll, we'll table it.
So we'll, and we'll table it after the
Yeah, we'll table.
Public hearing.
So what's next?
So, does it still need to read them, even though we wrote it down?
What, that we need to set?
Seven and eight, that's what I'm saying, but seven, Jennifer just did. And then eight, did you do the fieldhouse, strategic plan?
See, I think we're, it's confusing.
I, I don't remember seven, it's different, I'm sorry.
Discuss and consider possible regarding the annual budget proposal for the D C, D C budget.
No. I don't mind either. What was that? Huh? Oh, I read that one.
Oh, I read that one.
What's it say?
I don't know.
Discuss and consider possible action regarding a contract for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five funding to D C, by D C E D C to Dunkinville Chamber of Commerce. This is a, this is on the agenda that I was saying.
Yeah, so that's an error, uh, the Chamber of Commerce is not requesting a grant. That, what happened with that is, um, that is in the, that's in the contractual in the budget, right, in the detail in the budget. Um, when you go through the contractual of that, what happened was, like, I've seen it since I've been here, the Chamber of Commerce constantly comes back to you. Asking for you to sponsor this event, you to sponsor that event, so I asked them to give us a price for the whole year of everything, so that they don't just keep coming back. And it was thirty, do you remember what it is?
Thirty-six thousand one hundred.
Thirty-six thousand.
This is including the nineteen hundred per month.
And that includes everything, that includes a visitor center, that includes everything, right, so that it's not, it's not a grant, um. But that would just be the year, and then they wouldn't come back to you asking for any additional money, the D C E D C would be involved with everything. The visitor center is paid for out of hot funds, right, so that's separate, but still, it's all part of that, that's nineteen thousand, I think, right, so. She's trying to eat, and I'm not leaving her alone, so.
Twenty-two A for that hot fund, for that, for the center, and for sponsorship.
So that's what that is.
So I would need help, I'm confused, so do we do this one, or do we need to do that one that was published?
It was, what was posted on the board out there, cause that's the one we have to.
That's the one we have to follow, when people saw, that's not the standard.
This is what I pulled.
I remember seeing it, I'm the one that got, I was, that was distributed to us.
Okay, I'm just looking at this.
Yeah.
The one, yeah, the one that was distributed, at least the one that I got.
I had that chamber, I had one.
I had the chamber, I had.
Are you, I haven't logged on to the website, so is, was that emailed to you, or is that on the website?
Yeah, the email that you sent. Well, I mean, you had the link, and I went download the link.
Where did you get yours, Ms. Hebert?
Um, on the calendar for the events, and so it said D C E D C, bu- a board meeting for the twenty-fourth. And then I clicked on that, and it comes to the D C E D C webpage, and it says for, uh, click for the full agenda here, and that's how I got it.
So if that's what's posted on the calendar, you should probably use that, but there is no action to take on number seven, on, there, there is no request from the Chamber for a grant, so.
Okay.
So.
This is what's on, this is the one that's.
Yeah.
So the one that's in your book is the one that's posted through the website, now maybe there's a link, there's some problem with the link for the calendar. I would use the one from the calendar, that, that's what's on the public.
This is, just to avoid all confusion, I'm gonna make a motion to table item seven, regardless of what it says, until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
Just to make sure that we don't discuss anything out of order, yep.
Need a second? Is everybody, is it moving properly second in regards to tabling item? Would it still be seven?
Just, yeah, it's seven on this one.
Seven on it. Does anybody have any questions, comments, observations?
So subsequently, what we have is seven, and here is eight, based on what you're getting.
No, my eight, the only difference between this agenda in the book and mine was number seven, everything else is the same, I just scrolled through.
But I guess my question is, are our number sevens actually, you're in the right?
No.
No.
It's just, seven is just different.
Oh.
My eight is still Fieldhouse, my nine is still, um.
So the annual budget for D C, D C is on?
No.
I got you, okay. My eight is not Fieldhouse.
What is your eight's name?
My eight is A W L, these gentlemen here.
Well, I think, I, I, I think as long as you're following the verbiage, the number doesn't matter, right, so.
Correct.
You don't, next, you don't need to take action tonight on the chamber thing, you don't actually need to take action tonight on the Fieldhouse, we're just discussing it. But you may wanna consider, what was the next one, Ms. Hebert?
Um, I have, uh, eight is A W L, and then nine is conductive of a public hearing on Chamber of Commerce and A W L, and then executive session. My agenda doesn't have Fieldhouse on it.
Okay. I will further make a motion to table all discussions on the Fieldhouse from today's meeting until the next properly posted meeting. Regardless of what item number it's listed as.
Anybody have any questions?
Need a second?
No. Do I have a second?
I had the second on the first one.
Yeah, we had that, and then we're actually tabling the Fieldhouse as well.
We have Fieldhouse in that.
But the one that was posted, we didn't.
But it's an item in here.
But it's not the one that was posted. The one that was posted, we had.
And I'm gonna go look at what's on, let's see what's on.
No matter what this one says.
This is not the first time this has happened.
It's not the.
It, it, that's not the one we have right here.
It does not have the Fieldhouse.
Say.
Your second? It's been moved improperly second in regards to tabling the items that have to do with the chamber and the Fieldhouse, until next meeting, we get the proper, for the, for the public posting that was posted. Any other questions, comments, or observations? Hear you not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Discuss and consider possible actions regarding an application for hot funding for the A L W Entertainment located at seven thirty-one South Oral Forton Freeway. Dallas, Texas, seven five two zero three. An applicant here. Okay, if you would, please, uh, stand up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, you're Rick Bates, I'm with A L W Entertainment, our office is located at seven thirty-one South Oral Forton Freeway. I have, uh, Al Wash with me, he's the owner of A L W Entertainment, and the event is held at Dunkinville High School at Panther Stadium.
What exactly is it, what is?
Uh, so we're returning to answer any questions about the hot fund application for the Dunkinville Classic game on September fourteenth. We're, uh, asking for twenty-five thousand to go toward marketing, the event has a minimum budget of fifty thousand, um. It probably could go up to about sixty-five thousand, the total budget, we're asking for twenty-five thousand for the, for the game. And we're asked to come back to answer any questions about hotel rooms and, uh, marketing.
Now, remember, yes.
Is it taking place on September second, twenty twenty-four, correct?
Uh, September fourteenth.
Okay, here it is, twenty twenty-three, okay. I'm sorry, September fourteen?
Anything else you wanna add?
I don't know how much y'all know about, uh, A L W, we are an entertainment and sports company.
Yes, sir.
We have been doing this game for several years here in Dunkinville. My son went to school and played at Dunkinville, he lives in Dunkinville, uh. And I think it's just that my heart, I promote, I promote the Grammy and Preji football game in Dallas, uh, I do the NFL Hall of Fame game in Canton, Ohio. So this is what we do, as far as promotion, working with these kids in these cities.
And you had, they have, I snapped since then, exactly, what are we gonna be, what are we looking at in regards to, another ask is twenty-five thousand, what are we looking? Uh, what does that do for us, what is, what does that do?
Uh, so the reason that the hot fund application is submitted is that we require the teams that we play in the Dunkinville Classic to stay in Dunkinville. Uh, so over the previous years, we count by nights, so we already have a, a deal with, um, the, uh, the hotel off of Main Street. Where we're booking about thirty rooms, probably additional ten, additional ten, that's forty, so that's about eighty nights, I think we've been averaging about two hundred nights for the event. With the parents and boosters and people that are coming in town for the game, so it's a hot fund application to bring tourism into Dunkinville for this game. Uh, the game's been sold out a few of the years, and then we direct the traffic to the restaurants and to the other businesses, and we have everyone stay in Dunkinville. So the requests previously would go through the, uh, through the city council, it's now been moved over to your board, so we're here to answer any questions about the, uh, application itself.
Now, I remember we had talked about, uh, marketing and advertising. They're playing a team out of Baltimore, we're not advertising in Baltimore, though, are we?
Uh, yeah, actually, we are, I'll let Mr. Wash.
Yes, we, we advertise, definitely, in the Baltimore area, you have to figure that Dunkinville is ranked number eight in the nation.
Yes, sir.
And, and this school that we're talking about bringing in is, uh, uh, St. Francis, and they have more, more high school students out of their school, really NFL than anyone in the country. So, so, parents and, uh, I think the girl that plays for the Chicago, the, like, you know, one draft pick, uh, Reese, basketballs, women's basketballs, she went to high school there. There's been quite a few kids, so they have the support of the, uh, of the community there in, uh, the Baltimore area. And we have a great report in the city with the radio station in Baltimore, cause we do a lot of events in Baltimore. So we know how to contact the radio station, and it's not cheap, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right.
Yes, sir.
I, since, and then, I'm probably gonna ask a very ignorant question, so please, uh, bear with me here. But in your previous dealings with the city, how was the financial arrangement done? Were you all, did you all seek reimbursement, uh, of the twenty-five thousand, cause that's what we're used to, is.
Correct.
Yeah, we, we always, we never been paid upfront in advance, we always, uh, paid, uh, at a later date sometime, with three, four weeks, months, I've been.
Yeah, and I, and I think my, my concern from the last meeting, and it looks like y'all have addressed it, was a more detailed accounting of what that advertisement budget looks like. And, and I see it here in the updated application, so I appreciate that.
And, and the advertising does, it does vary a bit, um, so we may spend thirty-five thousand in advertising, the ask is twenty-five thousand. The advertising, of course, includes the D F W area, uh, but we promote the game in the other markets to bring in people, but when the game is promoted here, we're bringing in tourism from other parts of the city as well. So we're advertising and prosper with digital marketing, anywhere people love football, we're advertising, bring people into Dunkinville.
Considering the city of champions.
Yes, sir.
We looking for, uh, a three-peat this year.
Is the D E C listed as a sponsor?
Uh, you guys are, well, the city of Dunkinville is listed as a sponsor, uh, obviously, we can, uh, list you guys as a sponsor, we've done that with the city. Uh, previously on our advertising, on our flyers and our digital advertising, we've been able to also include links for the hotels and links for restaurants to guide people, so that's something, as we get into the advertising. We're just now going into the, uh, artwork now, we're having tickets printed now, so a lot of the planning has been done, but a lot of the, uh, the printing and the ad mats, that has not been done, so we're obviously open to adding sponsorship logos and sponsorship links.
So is the city of Dunkinville also sponsoring?
No.
So it would just be the E D C?
Because Dunkinville High School can't sponsor the game or be involved in that way, you can speed that more if you need to, as far as how it has to be done contractually. Um, but no, the city of Dunkinville, we include them as a sponsor in the logo, because Dunkinville High School is one of our partners.
Even though they're not a sponsor?
They're not picking up dollars, not in the sense of picking up dollars.
I think I know where I'm going with this.
And you have, you have to figure that this game is, it's not a money-making operation.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir.
We just try to offset some expenses, because what we don't make, it comes out of our pocket. And, and, and we've been kinda dedicated to the Dunkinville High School.
Yes, sir.
And we've been able to keep the ticket price low as well, so it's a regular football game, so.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I do, I'm sorry, uh, I, I've seen the event, and, uh, I've never participated in, in a lot of football games, but, um, so excuse my question, cause I'm just trying to understand this. When you're saying thirty rooms are being used, are for the coaches and the players?
The, uh, correct, correct, so for the teams that we bring in from out of town, they're obligated to stay in the Dunkinville hotel.
So when you advertise in Baltimore, how do you track that there's anything coming as far as hotel stays from Baltimore?
Uh, w- we're only able to track the room block that we have with our host hotel, but then for the recap after the event, we go back to the hotels with hoteliers, and they give us numbers from that beginning. So if there's an increase, we see that increase.
And those rooms would be submitted with your receipts to say that you booked two hundred rooms, you used thirty for the players, the other, um, a hun- hundred and eighty, or, or hundred and seventy rooms were, were used by out-of-town guests?
You could, we normally don't submit receipts from the hotels, the hotels give us numbers for their bookings, and we include that in our recap.
That's what I'm saying, so you, you would put into your receipts that they did receive a certain amount of rooms for, for folks.
So I think, um, we're probably just using a different word, when I say receipts, that's normally my, uh, for my radio, for my television, for my digital marketing, receipts from our buys.
Yeah.
What I receive from the hotels are their counts, so they'll say, hey, this hotel, normally we have X amount of rooms booked the weekend of your game, we had this amount of rooms booked, they'll share that information with us. We'll say we had this many rooms, so let's say it's one hundred rooms, and each person had two nights, we'll say one hundred rooms, two hundred nights, and we'll include that in our reporting.
Okay, so that is included in your receipt, okay, and then, um. I guess the other part that confused me was, you're putting in the Florida teams and some of this, is that just ancillary past marketing that was included in the package? Cause you've got Rock.
Yeah, with the, uh, application, we're normally asked to, uh, include from previous events, so you'll see previous tickets and program books and flyers and things like that.
Okay, that one might confuse you, cause I didn't see the Maryland one.
Yeah.
And so this would be the Maryland.
E- everything that you're looking at is from previous games, from previous years, we haven't submitted any artwork from this.
That's my confusion.
The problem. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
And we only include the games that Dunkinville won. Issue one day.
Motion two.
I'll make a motion to table this until after executive session.
It's been moved improperly second in regards to tabling, uh, item number, item discussion, uh, for A L W Entertainment. Uh, any other questions, comments, observations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Moving to executives, executives. Oh, public hearing.
On A L W.
Public hearing, yes. Uh, we're gonna, uh, open, we're gonna open the fourth of public hearing, uh, on, uh, A L W Entertainment, an application for hot, for hot funding. And change a motion to open a public hearing. It's been moved improperly second in regards to open the, the hearing, the open pub, open. The what?
Public hearing.
For A L W Entertainment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Did anybody wants to speak for the application for A L W Entertainment? You would? Okay, anyone who wants to speak against the application for A L W Entertainment? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patrick Cardy, and, uh, my family has been residing in Dunkinville. Uh, since August tenth, nineteen eighty-nine. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before you board, uh, citizen staff. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Walsh and associate for their explanation of. Their involvement in this initiative, and even though I'm not from Texas, I do know that football is king in Texas. Followed very closely by interstate highways and toll roads. So with that being said, uh, I'm opposed to utilizing the hot funds for this proposal. And the essence of my confusion, the essence of my. And the essence of my confusion, the essence of my opposition is confusion. And so I will share with you what I read, and on the basis of what I read, it appears to me that it's not a proper use of hot funds. House Bill number forty-one seventy, effective one, September twenty nineteen, states that a municipality can use hot funds to reimburse expenses, including promotion expenses directly related to a sporting event. To which the majority of participants are tourists who substantially increase economic activity at hotels and motels within the municipality or its vicinity if, A, the municipality is located in a county with a population of one million or less. B, the municipality has a population of more than sixty-seven thousand and is located in two counties with ninety percent of the municipality's territory. So when you read the, the law that governs this thing, it's got the law and then it's got all these exceptions. And, and looking at this, we're in Dallas County, Dallas County has a population of more than one million. Municipality has a population of more than sixty-seven thousand, that's not us, we're forty-two thousand soaking wet. And is located in two counties, we are not. Uh, Grand Prairie is, but we're not, we're a hundred percent Dallas County. So city manager said earlier that he was considering having the hotel lobby people come down and explain this. And I would definitely endorse that, I would definitely be there. What does they say in Texas, nothing happens and the creek don't rise? I would love to be in that meeting because I am clearly confused at this point. And my opposition is based on my confusion, not on Mr. Walsh or his associate or what they are wanting to do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Can I do?
Mr. Harvey.
Right. Mr. Patrick Harvey. Can you share your household, okay?
Yeah, it is, uh, forty-one seven.
Forty-one seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hearing none, entertain a motion to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to closing of the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Hearing nothing, hearing nothing else, we're going to number item, uh, executive session. In accordance with the Texas Government Code, DCE DC, check convene into closed executive session pursuant to the following section. Section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with city attorney for special counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation. No items. In accordance with the Texas Government Code, DCE DC, check convene into closed executive session pursuant to the following section. Section five five one dot zero eight seven. There you go. That's all the open lines. Okay, make a motion, go back into, uh, open session?
So moved.
So moved. It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to go back, go back into open session at eight twenty-eight P M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thank you very much. Any actions, appropriate actions as a result of closed executive session, what say you, the board?
I'll make a motion to approve an application for hot funding for ALW Entertainment located at seven thirty-one South Laurel Thornton Freeway, Dallas, Texas, seven five two zero three, for reimbursement of advertising expenses up to twenty-five thousand dollars based on confirmed hotel stay nights at one hundred and twenty-five dollars per night. The DCE DC logo will feature prominently on all advertisement, and these funds will also be appropriately verified by an attorney for eligibility before signed off on by the city manager.
Do I have a sec?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to approve of the ALW, um, um, application with all the, all the caveats mentioned by Mr. Reed. Any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Anything else? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thank you very much, everyone.